I'd like to welcome everyone here to the Tyler Independent School District Board of Trustees Meeting. This notice, this meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Notice the meeting has been posted. We have been in executive session now and returning from that. The first item that we have every month is our prayer and pledge of allegiance. If you can please stand, we will take care of that.
Let us pray. Dear Father, we ask you for wisdom as a board as we take on the issues and recognize the accomplishments of Tyler ISD. We ask for health for our students. We ask for patience from our teachers and our administrators. And we ask for peace for everyone involved in TISD. Please be with this board tonight and with those in attendance. I pray these things in my Savior's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. We don't have any action items from executive session, so we'll get right to special recognitions and board members. I think we're down front first tonight. There's no video, so let's head down there.
Tonight, we'd like to start our recognitions by recognizing our employees of the month. And we will recognize one teacher, one paraprofessional, and one manual trades employee for embodying Tyler ISD's mission and objectives, going above and beyond, and for acting as an ambassador for Tyler ISD on and off the campus. Our first recognition is for the teacher of the month, and she is Ms. Melissa Day, and she's a teacher at Andy Woods Elementary School. The paraprofessional of the month is Ms. Kim Johnson. She's the PMS clerk at Andy Woods Elementary School. And our manual trades auxiliary personnel goes to Charles Turner. He's the team leader for student management in the transportation department. Next, we'd like to recognize our campuses for recognitions that they have recently received. TEA released the 2015 State Accountability System Ratings for school districts and charter schools across the state. Districts, campuses, and charters receive one of three ratings under the new accountability system. Met standard, met alternative standard, or improvement required. In order to receive a rating of met standard, a district on a campus must meet the state target or either index one or index two in both index three and four. Under the rating system, the district, as well as Robert E. Lee and John Tyler High School, five middle schools, and nine elementary schools were rated as met standard. Of the schools rated as having met standard, eight earned one or more distinction designations. Distinctions are awarded based on high levels of achievement in that particular index. So tonight, we would like to recognize these campuses. And as I call your name, if you'd please come forward, we'll start with Robert E. Lee, and they received a distinction for reading, ELA, and science. Moore MST Magnet School, reading, ELA, math, science, social studies, top 25% student progress in post-secondary readiness. Clarkston Elementary School, reading, ELA, and top 25% in student progress. Jack Elementary School, reading, ELA, science, top 25% student progress in post-secondary readiness. Rice Elementary School, reading, ELA, top 25% student progress. Congratulations to all these campuses, and that concludes our recognitions.
All right, board members, if we can go to the approval of the August 3 minutes while they're clearing out?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes for August 3, 2015.
Is there a second? Thank you. Dr. Nation, any discussion, additions, or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, that motion carries. We now move to the public participation portion, and we have one person signed up today to speak, and it is Mr. Bob Brewer. And he's got several topics he wants to speak about tonight, and he's well-versed in the rules of public speaking at our meetings, so we'd like to welcome him here. Thank you, Bob.
I'm not usually so blessed to talk to several of your teachers like I did tonight, and it was just, it was great. Anyway, I came here to talk about Constitution Day, and that kicks off Celebrate Freedom Week, but as I understand it, that's already been covered earlier this year, so it looks like the students have been instructed in the Constitution and Freedom Week. But anyway, if not, we're going to be teaching on the other side of Copeland at the diocese for the Catholic Church. Nine series classes starting on the 22nd at 7:00. So if you want to get an in-depth view of the Constitution, that'll be a great place to do it. We've got a prof from TJC's teaching the class. So our freedoms and liberties are getting stomped on everywhere we turn, and this is one way to learn and become the sovereigns that our Lord intended us to be. The other thing was, I wish I could have talked last week or last month when they talked about the swimming pool. I sort of grew up in the, well, a year and a half in the Fun Forest neighborhood, and I just loved that pool. I mean, it has been just a key to Tyler's, no, I don't know, history. It's still there. It looks like it's great. It's been in operation every Sunday, every, every summer. Granted, it's been underused, but that facility is so phenomenal. I went there one night, full moon, and it felt like I was on a movie set for the, you know, the swimming, you know, Field of Dreams. It just, you know, it's just great. And I've seen a lot of kids, both black and white, working out at 5:00 and 6:00 a.m. over there, and I can't understand why we can't make better use of that. I understand that Robert Pelletier had tried to make some kind of an agreement to help, help make it more accessible and open, and I'm not sure what's happened with that. So anyway, the other item that I wanted to talk about was Common Core, the Tap 4, specifically Tap 4E. And the corporation that's behind that is just immersed in Common Core. And all this womb-to-workforce data tabulation and mining is just taking our liberties and our privacy. The FERBA laws have been usurped, and the purpose of an education is not to get them for a workforce that we don't even know that's out there. The purpose of an education is to teach beauty, and we've spent thousands of years perfecting the way students get trained. And that is giving them the basics so they can pursue their dreams and let them go as far as they can. So I would just, I tell you, this, all this testing and this data stuff that goes to anybody that says they want to use it for research is wrong, and I just appreciate talking to any of you at any time on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the business legal finance consent agenda. You had a few items to pull on that. Dr. Crawford?
Yes, sir. Item number, or item B for gifts and donations, along with item G.
All right. Board members will pull B and G, and we'll get a motion to approve items A, C, D, E, F, H, and I.
I so move.
Thank you, Reverend Mason.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, that carries. We'll move to item B. Dr. Crawford?
Always proud to celebrate the relationships and partnerships that we have here in Tyler, Texas, and Smith County in East Texas. And we have three that we want to specifically honor tonight for their donations here to the school district to serve our students. The first one in the amount of $5,000 from the Tyler ISD Foundation goes to the recipients of the John Tyler STEM Program. There's an attached report along with that in your packet. We're extremely proud of our partnership, of our strong Tyler ISD Foundation, and thank them for that $5,000 donation. Another $5,000 donation we would like to recognize for the board to take action upon is from Hall Buick GMC, and that was dedicated to the Communications Department for the inaugural Gary Moore Award, the GM Award, the Garry's, that we presented at the convocation. Remember, he was traveling abroad again upon being also honored. So we're thankful that Hall Buick GMC was the inaugural sponsor of the GM Award, so we thought it was very appropriate, and thank them for stepping up. Another partner that we have here is WRL General Contractors to John Tyler High School, again, to the John Tyler STEM Program, a very successful program that we've had at John Tyler here over the last few years. And certainly, our folks at WRL recognize that giving back to the school district that they've done so much work for in our construction programs is invaluable for us as well. So very proud of those three groups that have donated some money back to our students.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford. We'll take a motion on item B.
I move that we accept the gifts.
All right. Dr. Nation, motion seconded by Mr. Hager. All right, any discussion?
Thank you.
Do you want to say thank you? Yeah. These are, a lot of people think that, you know, public schools don't have community partners, and we don't need them. But everyone sitting up here knows we couldn't do anything without the extra help we get from private companies and citizens in Tyler, Texas, and we do appreciate the foundation, Hall, Hall Buick, and who were at, they were at the convocation, and WRL has given to several, several things. So they're giving back to the community, and we do appreciate it. Okay, motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? All right, that motion carries. Item G.
Item G is the sale of excess portable buildings. Across the district, they're actually, for the auction that's proposed by administration, are the portable buildings at Hogg Middle School, Hubbard Middle School, and what was formerly Stewart Middle School, now the AT Stewart Academy of Excellence. We have been able to successfully program the, the sale of these to be able to fit our instructional model. We feel that this has been able to successfully accomplish some of the things that the bond 2013 set out to do, and that was for safety and security purposes and not have students exposed to the outside elements by having to go back and forth into the buildings from portable buildings into the, into the schools. So as a way to successfully fulfill the commitment of this board, this administration, this school district, to the community that passed the referendum in 2013, we're recommending that we go ahead and put these portable buildings up for auction. We'll take questions at this time about that, those projects, if you have any. I also have Tim Loper here tonight to answer any questions if we have it.
Reverend Mason?
Dr. Crawford, since citizens tend to call and ask us about these portables, I assume we will have this sale posted on our Tyler ISD website?
Yes, ma'am.
And in newspaper or wherever?
We will appropriately post the required postings, which both of those are required, and they'll go to auction. When's, when's the auction?
Starts tomorrow.
Starts tomorrow, if the board approves the sale of these excess portable buildings.
I was going to ask how soon we could get them moved, but it sounds like we're moving on a few of them anyway.
I'll let Mr. Loper go ahead and come on up, but we are looking at this fall to be able to move those buildings.
In the auctioneer's documents and their scope of work to any potential buyers, of course, the auction starts, if approved, on the 18th and is over on December the 1st, and portables will be required to be moved by the owner or the purchaser by December 31st.
Where is the auctioneer?
October 31st.
October 31st.
I'm sorry.
Halloween.
Oh, wow. Are we moving them to the auction location and then?
No, sir. They will be sold on-site.
So whoever buys them is going to have to come on our campuses and move them from there?
Yes, they have to hire the moving company. They have to meet all of our insurance requirements as required by the state.
Okay.
And we have, we have a couple of really good movers that, of course, we've given contact information to the auctioneers, so basically the same guys that moved all those from the demolition earlier this year.
So, Prof, how many portables?
Sixty.
Sixty, wow.
Good deal. And just to repeat the obvious, the portables along Broadway at Hogg Middle School will be removed whether someone buys them or not.
Yes, sir.
And all of the portables at Hubbard that no one's in will be moved whether someone buys them or not?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just, I get questions from time to time. I want to make it real clear.
I understand.
All right.
Just a couple more items. We did go through an instructional assessment exercise at that camp at Hogg specifically to, to see if the feasibility there existed to be able to move those. Just some data here pulled off of the state data portal, which is called PMS. The highest enrollment that Hogg's ever seen is 650 students. That was as recent as 2011. In 2013, it was 628 students. In 2011, our facilities department conducted a capacity analysis of all of our campuses, K through 12, with, according to formula, the designed functional capacity at that campus is at about 510 students. Right now, we currently have enrolled 438 students at Hogg Middle School. We have gone through that instructional assessment exercise, and we're able, we're going to be able to successfully place our students inside the school building for safety and security purposes. So we do have confidence that we can certainly execute this removal of these portables. Certainly, if, if, if we go back and look, see we need to make some adjustments later on, we will come back to the board for that, but we're fully ready to, to begin this execution of fulfilling our commitment to the community and removing those portable buildings.
Any questions, board members? So at Hogg, since that's not a giant school to start with, are we at a good number now? Are we, will there be a time in the near future the board needs to be preparing that we need to look at what we're doing with attendance numbers there, or have to look at portables again? What's the, what are we looking at going forward? And your best guess?
The best thing I can recommend to the board tonight is I do think that you need to start looking at some programming options for, for what Hogg looks like. In other words, does it remain a comprehensive middle school that is full of everything you can offer under the sun? Certainly, we understand that the building was built in 1930, no longer having portables there because of our commitment to our community to, to manage the, or the building of Three Lakes to actually alleviate some of the overcrowding of that attendance zone. And being able to compete, whether it be academically, or athletically, or socially, with a 1,000-student middle school, which is kind of our model right now with the new builds, is something that the board is going to need to consider. It's something that the administration is going to work on as we go along. I do think that the remainder of this year and certainly next year, you're going to continue to have a comprehensive situation over there. What hap, what transpires over the next year and a half, what we propose and what the board initially adopts of the future of Hogg will be, will be something we'll need to look, to look at. So I think it's a good question. You know, we staffed by formula this year. We reduced some programming district-wide and not just Hogg, but at other middle schools as well, so we think we're appropriately staffed at that school. We think that the capacity as far as student enrollment goes is about where it needs to be. It cannot grow any, any further. And then obviously, certainly something that the board needs to probably consider is also if you, any further construction programs of either a different middle school feeder pattern, and maybe Hogg being a specialized campus for some other type of instructional program would be for some consideration, or do you actually go in and refurbish the building and expand it with additional, with additions? So I think there's a lot of opportunity there. Our district is really taking the lead here in East Texas as far as having quality programs of choice for niches of students to access, and I think Hogg's a wonderful site to consider for some of those innovative, high-achieving academic programs that could potentially be a part of our future in Tyler ISD.
Thanks. I just want to go on record as saying that, you know, we talk a lot about front porch programs and front, you know, especially with athletics, and, you know, Hogg is a, it's a front porch school right there on Broadway. People see it, people from out of town see it when they come in town. It is very visible, and I think it's very important for us to maintain that site as, in some sort of capacity and, you know, keep the, obviously, and the exterior minus the chain-link fence and the portables looks good. I mean, the landscaping's good, and I think we can really improve on that, but if it could, if we get rid of those portables and do some landscaping and really make it into a high-performing, functional school of some sort, there's conversations to be had. I just think that, that would really be good for town. Really be good for city.
I agree.
Okay. All right, that, I guess we need a motion on that one. We didn't get a motion on that one, did we?
No.
All right, so I'll take a motion on item G.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the sale of the portables. I second the motion.
Thank you, Reverend Mason, Ms. Washington. Any more discussion or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. All right, move on to curriculum consent agenda. We're going to pull item A and need a motion to approve items B, C, D, and E.
I move we approve items B through E.
Thank you very much. Mr. Washman, second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Mason. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. Item A. Why don't we get an, why don't we get a motion on item A, and then we'll get some discussion on it?
Go ahead.
All right. Need a motion to approve item A on class-size waiver exemptions.
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. We're excited about bringing a measure of progress in one year's time to the board for action tonight. And that is our class-size waiver. We went into this year's budget doing the best that we possibly could to meet the strategic planned request to have 22 to 1, that's 22 students to one teacher, class-size ratios from grades K through 4. And tonight, we're bringing to you the, that opportunity to act on that. Got a piece of paper I can find. I've got some notes on it. There it is. Okay. The improvement from last year at this time to, to right now is a 56% improvement in the amount of waivers that we're asking the board to approve. The fall of 2014, we asked for 41 waivers. Last spring, we asked for 44 waivers. Tonight, we are proud to say that we are going to bring to the board the opportunity to waive 28. 23, 23 tonight, so we were able to reduce that even further. That's right, okay, here it is, waivers by five, so we're actually gonna be presenting 23 tonight. The, according to the data that's on the screen here in front of you is an indication of what grade levels that you may wind up approving tonight and what locations that those schools are actually at. If you want to take a look at that. We're really very, we're really close in a lot of, in a lot of areas, a lot of places. When we do have a class size that tips over, for instance, in grade levels, let's just say there's four classes in, in that grade level and there's 23 students per class in that grade level, then we will, we will actually employ or deploy an instructional aide to that class to, to, to make that happen. We, for instance, at Rice Elementary School, go ahead and turn that page, is it on there? There's Rice, Rice has a heavy fourth grade and we've asked for four waivers on that. Being able to, or, yeah, first grade, I'm sorry. They've asked for four waivers in first grade, we're able to deploy sometimes in support of, of that classroom. Caldwell Elementary, go ahead and flip it, there it is right there, Caldwell first grade, we saw, or Caldwell second grade, we saw a need to actually hire another teacher. And so, we were able to employ another teacher to, to, to be placed there. And it's a delegate balance, I mean, it's, you know, you do the best you can to project while you're making your budget and you're, as it compares to enrollment. And when you, when you get to the year and then you're a little bit over, then you have a choice to make. Either assign an actual aide per class or you actually employ another teacher. We've decided to employ another teacher there. You know, the, the adverse of that is sometimes when students start with a certain teacher, the first two or three weeks of school, they want to stick with that teacher. So, going to learn a new teacher is sometimes something that's a concern of the parents. But we do a good job of hiring people here and I think that we'll be able to hire the right staff person for that Caldwell slot. Have we already employed that, Ms. Kano?
Yes.
We have, okay, so they've already started?
They're getting ready to move a ready on the teacher to get here.
Okay, waiting on the teacher to get here, so we're in good shape there. We still have some challenges in our bilingual programs. And again, it's, it's, again, it's the economy of being able to find a qualified, quality bilingual teacher. With the growing bilingual population in the state of Texas, I think everybody's in competition from Harlingen all the way up to the Panhandle and from El Paso all the way to Tyler. So, we're competing for the same folks and certainly we're, we're doing the best we can to fill those needs. But again, if, if they tip over, for instance, at Dixie Elementary, you have a kindergarten bilingual class that has 30 children in there, we're able to deploy an aide there to, to relieve that, that stress as far as how many kids are in there.
All right, any comments or discussion?
Dr. Crawford, could you just briefly comment on the efforts to recruit bilingual teachers? I know we've gone to kind of extraordinary efforts to go out and compete, can you talk through that?
Sure. For once, about keeping them here, so, you know, I think once you grab one and making sure that they have a connection here pays dividends as far as your recruiting efforts go. And I think we've had a, had great success in keep, in maintaining, at least over the last year, since I've been here to observe, some relationship building activities that are making them part of the Tyler family and connecting them with other, maybe Hispanic parents or Hispanic groups in town to make sure that they have a, a place in our community. So, that really helps, I think, one thing we're doing, Ms. Letty that, that's in our HR department along with Ms. Kano really has a, a knack for developing those relationships, so we don't have those vacancies in a much more routine basis. We've also ceased to travel to Spain like we have in, in previous years to, to do some of the recruiting. Same thing with the Dominican Republic and other, maybe Puerto Rico, some other areas. We really focused on staying within, maybe this hemisphere for right now, that's our strategy to, to, to employ bilingual staff. We also have a, a, a very, it's in its infancy right now, but we also recognize that we have a growing Hispanic population here in Tyler, a growing bilingual population. And working on those high school aged bilingual students that we have, to attract them to the education profession is, is one of our large goals for HR, just as it is with the city to attract bilingual police officers and bilingual firefighters. We think those public servants that are bilingual, and there's a niche here in Tyler, Texas, and it's only gonna grow. So, those are some things that we're doing, focusing on the relationships so that we can keep the ones we do hire here, so that we're not always following that cycle of trying to employ them and then looking for some grow your own programs from within that we've already had some success with. We also have opportunities for instructional aides that are bilingual that may want to go into teaching. And we've had some success there, just a couple that have actually moved into the teaching profession after serving as instructional aides or in other positions in our district.
Thank you. Any other comments? Let me just say, this has been a topic of interest for the board for several years and it came directly from the community and I think was even mentioned in the strategic plan, but it is, we do recognize the efforts that have been put into this and do appreciate the staff and central office really working hard to try to make this happen. I know it affects the budget and that's probably where we got in the position we were before, was trying to make things work budget-wise. But I think that most of the data appears to show if you have a great teacher, that's the biggest influence. But having a class size that's manageable doesn't hurt, so.
Agreed.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. President, as you were speaking, it reminded me of another question. I'm wondering just the broad, if you have a number for the broad financial impact of making this significant improvement this year, what kind of round numbers for what total expense we're looking at?
We have an expert person that can answer that.
It's a significant commitment.
Yeah.
Yeah, the ones we fixed since school started is 300,000, but what do you think the, the impact was from last year, the budget we worked on?
Oh, it was probably whatever, like 17,000, 15,000.
Yeah, it's about, it was about a million, a million, million and one, I believe.
Yeah, okay.
Is the impact, that's what we started out last year thinking, so that's about right. I mean, when we, when we start talking about budget, we, we think that every FTE or personnel units, about a $50,000 chunk.
With benefits and everything included?
Yes, sir, and so, need 17 to 20 additional FTEs put into the, to the system's gonna get you closer to a million, sometimes over that million and one.
Does, does it affect teacher retention? Just now that classes are manageable, they're happier or?
We hope so. Yeah, we hope so, I, I think that we'll be able to do some longitudinal studies on that and be able to come back to you with, you know, maybe at the end of this year to see if, if maybe class size, it did impact teachers' morale.
Yeah, I know in 2014, we might've had 48, but I'm interested to know in 2013 what it was, 'cause I, I kind of, do you remember it being like? Do y'all remember 2013? Like 60 to? Yeah, I kind of remember around 60, so that percentage over the last two years has decreased more than 56%. I mean, it's.
Sure, we were a little nervous coming to y'all last year because of the year before and we had made a big deal and that was one of the first projects I inherited. And so, we, we appreciate what you did last year, but this year, like you said, the staff really used some creativity to, to get us to this point, so.
Good job.
And as a side note, you know, people talk about getting money into the classroom, you know? I mean, this is money into the classroom right here, so that's not the only reason we do it, but all of it put together. Hope it, hope it helps and student achievement, that's the whole, that's the whole reason. All right, we've already made the motion, I do know that and seconded it, any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries 7-0. All right, on to discussion of a local policy.
In page 46 of your board book. This is the first reading of an adjustment to our investment policy to CDA local. Allow the district to maximize the yield for investing in larger, or excuse me, longer term, higher interest bearing opportunities. We've been, we've reviewed it through the district administration, we've actually, this has been backed by Thompson and Horton LLP as far as being able to adjust this. Right now, you adopt the local TASB recommendation, which is very restrictive on being able to invest your, your dollars. But we're asking that the board consider adjusting this policy so that we can actually see if we can get a better return in a safe, in a safe environment compared to what we've been doing. The adjustment is in your packet.
One place.
Page 48. Do we have that, John, Ms. Roebuck? There it is.
If, is, are the words chief financial officer and investment officer wanting the same?
What did you, what page are you averaging?
You have two. Thank you.
It is the first reading, if you have any other questions, feel free to contact myself or Ms. Bjork, we'd be happy to answer that and have further discussion at the next board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford, I would say that's a great topic. If any of you have expertise in that area, feel free to get with the contacts there on the, in your handbook and let them know. Ms. Jean? You were looking at, no. All right, we'll move on.
Future business, yes, sir, October 15th will be our regular meeting, but October 5th is a board workshop. We'll actually have consultant, our friends from the Center for the Reform of School Systems to actually come in and work with the board and the superintendent to get our governance aligned with our strategic plan and our superintendent appraisal. So, it's gonna be an exciting, rigorous event for our, for our board to go through. I think we've got it scheduled for four o'clock that day and it could last anywhere, anywhere upwards of four hours. We're gonna put some serious work into our next board workshop.
Looking forward to it. All right, board, we've got a meeting on the 12th, I guess, is that what I saw on there?
On the 15th.
All right, okay. Any other items, board members, you want to have added or put on an agenda or discuss? Let us know between now and then, otherwise, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's it.